I'd like to call this October 4th Council Work Session and Regular Meeting the order. Everybody please stand in silence unless we remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
The flag is to the right of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please. Mr. Gerard.
Right.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezzan.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Gorman. Mr. Portruch. And Mr. Green. Anybody on this side of the room that speak on anything besides McDonald's and all that, just general public, please go to the podium and state your name. Anybody on this side of the room?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Denise Smith. And I'm here on behalf of Ellen Scanzella and the Bristol Borough Parade Committee. Bristol Borough is having a Christmas parade. Just want to make sure you know that this year. And it is on Saturday, November the 27th. The rain date would be Sunday, November the 28th. To our residents and businesses, if you would like to participate, please fill out a no-fee participation form as soon as possible. And there is an email address that Ellen has. And it is ellen, E-L-L-E-N-T-O-M-4-0@aol.com. And you can enter a band, a flow, a character, school groups, antique vehicle, et cetera. And those of you who are here, you know how wonderful that parade is. And we really want to keep it going. And we'd like to thank, the Parade Committee would like to thank Councilman Michael Gorman for reaching out and getting sponsorship from the William Penn Bank for the horses and carriage that are going to carry Santa and Mrs. Claus. Thank you so very much. That was so quick. I mean, incredible. Thank you. Thank you so much. And then I have a concern of my own. I live in Harriman, and I sit on my porch, and I can see Hay Street coming towards Farragut. There's a stop sign there, but nobody stops. Ever. Hardly ever. And I wish I could have recorded it with my phone, but I'm not too good at it. But I watched one morning, and it was just one car after the other, car after the other, car after the other. I mean, there's a stop sign there. And that's a really bad corner, because you come in from Farragut to go Garfield, and then here's Hayes coming this way. It's just, it's just bad. And I just wanted to make sure you knew about that.
Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side of the room? That ends public participation. Okay. We have, Kurt, you want to handle the McDonald's thing? Before we do that, Jan, you and Dawn's here for Bristol Day?
Yes, we are.
So why don't you guys come up? Mrs. Cohen and Mr. Gorman have a check for you.
All right, good. How are you?
I have a proclamation. Okay. A proclamation of historical Bristol Borough, County of Bucks, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania honoring the Bristol Cultural and Historic Foundation for the sponsorship of the annual Historic Bristol Day celebration. Whereas the Bristol Culture and Historic, Cultural and Historical Foundation will sponsor the annual Historic Day celebration on October 16th, 2021. And whereas this event has brought great pride to the borough of Bristol, and it provides its citizens a day to embrace and honor the historical significance of Bristol Borough. And whereas the Council of Bristol, of the borough of Bristol desires to honor the Bristol Cultural and Historic Foundation and the many hard-working volunteers for their efforts in this annual event, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Bristol, and it's hereby resolved by the authority of the same, that October 16th, 2021, is hereby designated Historic Bristol Day, and that Bristol Cultural Historical Foundation is hereby honored for its sponsorship of the annual Bristol Day event. The Council congratulates the participants and the volunteers and sponsors of this event, which has proven to be a highlight of many community events in Bristol Borough.
Again, Dawn and Jan, on behalf of Council, we'd like to thank you for your hard work. And we know that there's many more volunteers behind the scenes. Just make sure everybody comes out on October 16th. There's a lot of events, house tours, vendors, learn the history, and just come out and meet your neighbors. It's a wonderful day, and thank you again for making a highlight for the year. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Jezwaldi has.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you. Well, first of all, everybody has a program in front of them, and you can see that there are many, many, many events from 10 to 4 that day. I want to thank all of the Council members for their sponsorship, for their cooperation, for their encouragement. Without that, we, as an organization, couldn't do the job that we have to do. So we thank you. And we also thank you for the check, which is very nice. And I want to remind everybody that there will be a dedication ceremony at 9:45 at the gazebo to honor three of our people who passed away. We have Carol Mitchner, Mary McElvein, and Cheryl Napoli. So if you could be there then, that would be great. And then there will be a speaker, David Christian, who is a vet, and will be speaking there as well as at the car show. I'd like to turn it over to Dawn, who is the chair, co-chair.
Co-chair with Mrs. Jezwaldi, and she's teaching CCD tonight. So we're going to have the oldest house in Bristol located on 910 Rackliff Street open, along with three gardens, and one of which is Ralph and Monica's Garden. Thank you very much for opening your garden. And we're also going to have the annual Riverfront Tea. We'll have the Children's Corner at the Grundy's Library. Several churches and public buildings, along with our town hall, will be open for touring. We want to thank the Bristol Borough School District also for the free shuttle buses. We're going to have Antique Boat Show that will be at our beautiful docks. We'll also have crafters and nonprofit organizations on the 200 and 300 blocks of Rackliff Street, and a lot of food vendors down behind the riverside, and a little bit of entertainment going on at the gazebo. And then also, CBM, aka Bristol Fuel, will be celebrating their 75th anniversary, and they're going to display their first oil truck that was purchased in 1946 at 529 Bass Street, along with the cement mixer that was used to build homes along Jefferson Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. And they're also going to display some antique tools. And so we're going to have lots of fun that day. Come out and join us. There's definitely something for everyone. Thank you, and thank you for your generous donation.
Yes. And I forgot to mention, we're also going to be giving COVID shots that day. They will be across from the bank. So if, well, I'm sure every.
Any boosters or just?
Booster and the shots. Yes. So you can get your booster that day. So come on out and get shot. There you go.
Is it Pfizer or Moderna was the question?
I think it's Pfizer, but I'm not absolutely sure.
Pfizer and Moderna.
Yeah. Okay.
They're interchangeable.
There you go. Thank you so much.
I just want to mention, Bill. Also, don't forget the car show. That'll be going on as well.
And it's funny, because Mrs. Jezwaldi gave you all these notes. Her husband's in charge of that.
Yeah, right? She didn't put me on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What about Monica's?
Monica's Garden.
It's just hers?
She puts all the time in. Okay. So we have people here for McDonald's. Kurt, however you want to handle that, go to the podium.
They have a very brief presentation if they can.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. Michael Loy, I'm from Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell Hippel.
So you want to put the, and at that podium is a microphone that don't, don't pick you up at home.
There you go.
Good? Just hold it? That's fine. Great. So I'm Mike Malloy. I'm from Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell Hippel. This is Mike Jitner. He's from Bowler Engineering. This is the McDonald's at 75 Commerce. It's right on Bristol Pike. You know it very well. The applicant is McDonald's USA LLC, and they're coming in, basically, they're going to remove an 80-square-foot bay window. They're going to put a 40-square-foot vestal in and a 20-square-foot, I'm sorry, 20-square-foot cash office. They're also going to put some ADA accessible spaces in to make the, you know, the McDonald's more accessible to handicapped and people with special needs. And there's a few waivers requested. One is from sidewalk. The other is from landscaping. With respect to the sidewalk, and Mike, maybe you can.
Yeah, I can. Just real quick, on the plan itself, sorry, I'm over, please, here. Pass the mic. Yep. So on the plan itself, the building's going to result in 19 square feet of reduction in building area, about 27 square feet of reduction of impervious, and we're going to be adding about four more parking spaces to the site. So we're increasing landscaping. We're going to add about nine trees inside the site. McDonald's is a lease parcel within the Brixmore Shopping Center, so we're going to do everything we can inside our lease parcel to really improve some of the existing nonconformities. On the sidewalk waiver, we're required to add sidewalk along, quote-unquote, "our frontage of our property." Now, our frontage of our property, technically, our lease line follows the curb line, so really, inside the McDonald's there, we really, the frontage is really on the Brixmore property, but technically, Brixmore has frontage on both Bristol and then also the side street here coming through. As you can see on the plan, you're probably well aware, PennDOT came through, did a lot of improvements. For whatever reason, they didn't construct sidewalk along the frontage. Not sure why. And then as you get inside the Brixmore Center, there's really no pedestrian connectivity inside the center. So really, the request is for a waiver of the sidewalk along both Bristol Pike and then obviously the side street within that area.
And the landscape that we're looking at is an existing nonconforming feature, plus it's beyond the boundary of our property, and we're adding trees to improve it.
So are they putting up a brand-new building?
No. So what they're doing is they're re-imaging. So the building itself, the footprint of the building generally is going to stay the same, and what I like to call it is reskining of the building. So bringing basically the existing building, taking off the mantled roof, and this is generally what it's going to look like here, to fall within the McDonald's rebranding initiative that you've probably seen at many of the restaurants in the Delaware Valley.
Yeah, because the building's in definitely dire need of repair.
Yes.
I mean, you pull in, the lights are falling out of the drive-thru. So I mean, it's.
You're seeing a reinvestment in this site.
It's a bad, it needs to be fixed.
We're talking about interior and exterior improvements to the McDonald's. So this would be a major overhaul without tearing the entire building down.
When you say you're requesting a waiver from landscape, pardon my ignorance, but you're adding trees, but you're requesting a waiver, so.
Correct. There's a requirement in the ordinance on the perimeter of the site, around the perimeter where the parking is, to have a three-foot hedge or three-foot shrub row within that area. Our lease line extends up to the curb line. It doesn't go beyond. So the request from McDonald's really is to provide some interior landscaping on the site. We are slightly reducing impervious, so we're trying to do everything we can. It's a nonconforming condition out there, but McDonald's is improving it. The waiver is from providing that hedge row along the frontage, along the Pike, and then also the side street there. Now, there's significant landscaping and green area out there today, and McDonald's sits down just a little bit, so we feel there's a natural buffer area existing today.
We also don't own the land. I mean, yeah, right.
Will the parking lot be improved?
I believe McDonald's is looking at milling and overlaying a portion of it so that it's improved. But obviously, if there's any repairs needed, this is the time that they're going to be doing it.
Yeah, I mean, to Council President D. Jeppe's point, obviously, this is an improvement, but it is a neglected property, and we would like to see that not remain the case, I'm sure.
And I think that's what you're saying here, really. It's going to be a concerted effort, reinvestment, you know, a rehabilitation of the building, the reskining, the interior, the accessibility, you know. It's a commitment to the site, the new landscaping.
Will the additional drive-through, please?
No, not at this point.
You go around the county, and you go into different, you take kids, you're whatever, into different McDonald's, and they're state-of-the-art. And in Bristol Borough, this thing's been neglected, and I'm not blaming the owner. I know it's because of the people that owned the site or whatever, but I was in there the other day, and I'm telling you, the lights through the drive-thru, they're going to fall on your car. They're just hanging out. It's in poor condition. You know, it really needs some major work.
Well, we hear you.
Kurt, what do you recommend? I mean, you're our engineer, you and the solicitor.
Yeah, sure.
We issued our review letter. We've gone back and forth with their team, and it's really down to the waiver requests. And the one that I know we've been talking about has been with the sidewalks, and, you know, the insulation of the sidewalk, any insulation of sidewalk on 13 is a good thing based on the historic, you know, pedestrian interactions that we've had. So we would feel most comfortable if the sidewalk did get installed here.
And I think the request from McDonald's, that if we could consider the waiver of the sidewalk along the side street, since it's not going to anywhere within the center, really sidewalk to nowhere, if McDonald's would install along the frontage here, if it's possible to defer that sidewalk to the spring, that gives us the ability to get the PennDOT permits and allow the construction of the McDonald's to occur. McDonald's would like to start in November. They have their ENS permit, really down to just building permits. Hopefully, the land development waiver is considered along with the other waivers, and then we're off and ready to go.
And we'd also add that it would be preferable if we didn't have to go through a recording process with the plan, if we could come in for a building permit based on your approval and the waiver of subdivision and land development, the waiver of land development. It's a.
Just to clarify, Council, it's really not a waiver of land at all. They still went through a process. It's just a simpler process, but they didn't have to go to the borough planning commission, technically not to the county, even though they did. It's meant to be for projects like this. Let's go back to the sidewalks. So the street that goes into the site, you're saying there are no sidewalks on either side?
Correct.
Sorry. Can I have your mic? Please. Sorry. He's got it. Correct. The. Say your name again.
Mike.
Mike. If you go to that podium and leave the mic there, it's so much easier. Just lay it on her, because the camera.
Talk from there.
Okay, all right.
So much easier.
Camera. That's fine. That's fine.
And the camera got a better shot.
To answer your question, there is no sidewalk that exists coming into the site on either the McDonald's side of the side street nor the recently constructed Autozone. The Autozone sidewalk ends at the entrance to the, really, to the overall shopping center. As you can see on the aerial, there's no interior pedestrian connectivity as well. So we're asking for a true waiver of sidewalk along that frontage of the, this side road. And then the sidewalk along Bristol Pike for the frontage of McDonald's, the request would be to defer that to the spring because of the time that would be necessary to acquire PennDOT permit, because the sidewalk would be in the DOT right of way, and allow McDonald's to construct and operate on a temporary CO as we then construct the sidewalk. We would hold the sidewalk in escrow, so that would obviously be on the table, and McDonald's is willing to do that.
So what I'd ask Council to consider is, so this sidewalk is now existing. It's a newer sidewalk. I think what we're experiencing, Mr. Dillon, you can verify this, is people are, pedestrians are coming in, whether we like it or not.
Bicycles.
Bicycles. They're walking. They're coming in from town. They're using this. And I understand there's no sidewalk system, but I would think a sidewalk here at least gets them out of harm's way into the project. And hopefully someday we can encourage the property owner to install more sidewalks. But pedestrians are using that. So now, right now, they're forced to be walking in the street, literally, because they have nowhere else to go. I would think that that sidewalk's probably more important than the 13, because if you put a sidewalk here, it's going nowhere, right? Because there's no sidewalk all the way to 413. Okay? So the entire frontage of 13. And we really don't want to encourage people to do that anyway. You know, we'd rather than go into the site and rather than walk along 13. So what we might consider is not waiving that part of it, if that's what Council wants to do.
So can we approve this tonight, based on we still didn't work out anything with the sidewalks?
Well, then, I mean, one of the conditions we worked out, I guess the concern is the plan. At what point can they start? Is the PennDOT situation only a 413 issue, Route 13 issue, or is it also an issue on the walk-in? Is that a PennDOT waiver required as well?
PennDOT would not be involved on the side street.
So if we said we want the sidewalk there but not on 13, then that takes the PennDOT barrier out?
We'd still have to make a connection to the 13 sidewalks. There would probably inevitably be some kind of a PennDOT permit. But I think if I'm hearing what everyone's saying to this point, we would want to know, coming out of this meeting, a conditional final approval. We would want to know the status of the sidewalk. They would need to know the status of the sidewalk, because they got to move to try to get.
So why don't we, because I know they want to get this done, why don't we approve this tonight, based on you and the solicitor working out the sidewalk agreement in some way for Council, if Council's okay with that, and before they pull their building permit?
Yeah, so I, and to get to their ultimate, what I think they want to do is they want to get out of the ground in November, so we'd have to move quickly. And they're moving quickly, and we're trying to move with them. PennDOT's not going to come through, but if we do financial security agreements and we do escrow for the sidewalk, then we can allow work to begin. We can allow, they're already occupying the building, so a temporary certificate of occupancy is, in my opinion, something that can be done without the sidewalk already being installed. And then in the springtime weather's better, they can come, and the permits are in hand.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to hold up a project.
The only thing that's still something, I guess, we can work with Mr. Salerno on, is the recording drawings. We have been recording waiver of land development drawings up to this point. This is a little bit trickier because it's such a large parcel. I don't remember what we did for the ATM. Yeah. So, but one way or another, I think if we can get the plan recorded without it being a huge undertaking, that would be ideal to be consistent, but.
Yeah. The only, I mean, I understand what Mr. Salerno's saying, because we do have people who are walking. I watch it every day. They're walking into the Commerce Center from that front. So where that sidewalk is coming off of 13, it, to me, it doesn't make sense that we're going to have McDonald's put their sidewalk on the other side, because now there's no sidewalk that extends.
You're saying right here.
No, I'm saying here. Yeah, but right now what's happening is the people are walking along the sidewalk, which is safer for them, right? But now, we force or have McDonald's put their sidewalk here, it doesn't help them, because now they got to cross over here, both sides it is to get to this sidewalk.
There's an existing crosswalk there.
There's a protection cross there.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
We pick it up there and just.
This at least gives them something.
Okay, yes.
So what we're saying is, this crosswalk here, if you put a sidewalk here, it gets them out of this grass or.
Gotcha. But we're still going to have to connect 13 to get that, right?
No, we're not doing this.
No, what I'm saying, even just get that when we cross over, this is going to be the top of it, it's going to be 13.
Where we connect into that sidewalk, there's a little bit of a curb ramp there today. Where we connect into that, as Kurt mentioned, we'll probably need at least a minor DOT permit, because that work and that connection would occur within the DOT right of.
Gotcha.
All right. So does anybody have a problem with the solicitor and Kurt trying to work this out with agreements and all?
I just, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure, from my opinion, that when we walk away here, that there is an understanding that a sidewalk is going there. How that looks, how they work it out.
The motion's going to be a partial waiver. We're going to waive the sidewalk on 13, but not the rest of it. And the other waiver, I think, makes sense, because there's already landscaping there. And so I would recommend, and I think Kurt recommends, that the other waiver be granted. This will be a partial waiver, and then they just have to work out the timing and the recording and all. Like I said, we're not going to hold them up, but we want to see them get started. And we will need an escrow because of.
Understood.
Are you guys okay with that?
Fine. Again, the key is, I know that the paperwork's got to catch up, but if we can work in concert with the borough, allow some construction to be happening while the paperwork may be catching up, obviously, we're, you know, McDonald's is here, so we're here to.
Play it.
We're not, we're not looking to hold you. Yep. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from McDonald's need to say, want to say anything, or?
I wish we didn't have to do the side. It's frustrating, and it feels like the sidewalk was completed around us by PennDOT. So there is a level of frustration as far as what we are being required to do, but I.
Can you hear, can you hear?
You shouldn't go up.
If you want to say something, the podium is probably your best spot.
Just state your name and offer the record.
Sure. Eileen Seeburger. I'm the area construction manager. I'll be overseeing the renovation of this location. I just want to say that this project is going to be paid for by the franchisee. It's not going to be paid for by McDonald's. We're going to oversee it, but she's going to pay for it. And there is a level of frustration as far as the sidewalks are concerned, simply because all of the other sidewalks were done by PennDOT. And this particular site is now, we're being required to add two sides of sidewalk, and neither of those sidewalks are on our property. So I hear what the engineers are saying. You know, I'm not an engineer, but it is, there is a level of. I think it's one for the sidewalk. I think. No, but the. Oh, only the one on the side? Yes. Oh, then I misunderstood. Okay. So I feel a little bit better. Thank you.
You feel better, right?
I'll be quiet now. Thank you. Thank you.
Next time you come, bring us some there.
Yes, next time we will. You'll have to come by the grand opening.
Yeah.
Only if I can get free fries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Back. I don't want that. Just kidding. Just joking.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joe Rosella, and I'm with DL Helen Associates.
Want to put that up there and then go to the podium, or you need to stay right here, or whatever you want to do?
Okay.
Okay. I think I'll stay up here because of the scale of the plan. It might be easier for me to depict what we're proposing here on the plan. So the plan in front of us is for some restriping of the parking lot and to include two exterior freezers that's located on the north side of the building, and then to enclose some areas that are paved under the roof overhang to create some more usable retail space. On the west side of the building, we're proposing to create, again, angled striping to facilitate circulation.
Joe, I'm sorry, what building are we talking about?
Amish market.
Oh, is it the Amish, okay.
Yeah, this is the Amish market, Green Lane, the furniture store, and then attached to it is the market itself. As I was saying, in the, on the west side or in the rear, we're just proposing to create striping for one-way circulation that will also allow them to have a more defined loading and unloading zone for people that are purchasing the produce or the products inside. And then across the front, we're just restriping the ADA compliant parking spaces and the two shaded areas on either side of the furniture store. And in between are, it's currently the roof overhang and that they're closing that to create some more building space. And then there's an area that's currently paved now that they're removing the paving to add some, you know, landscaping and flowers to kind of green it up in the front of that space. There are really no other improvements around the site. Everything that's depicted on the plan is really just restriping and the freezers that are being proposed actually just sit on the asphalt. They don't require a foundation. In conjunction with the plan is a waiver of the land development process because it's such a minor plan. And there are also six waivers that go along with the plan that have to do with the minor nature of the improvement since there's really limited disturbance and really is facilitating restriping and building, you know, within paved areas. I can step through those waivers. We have a review letter from the borough engineer, which we've complied with. We've made all of our submissions. The waivers that, if the board, excuse me, if the council-
Let me find out from Kurt. Kurt, what are we doing here? Waiver?
Here's one right there.
I don't think we need to go through any waivers. I mean, I think our office is okay with the waivers that are requested. We did talk about the sidewalks though here also. It's more challenging to put in a sidewalk here, so I know that it was discussed to potentially consider recommending a fee in lieu of the installation of the sidewalk.
Okay. All right.
I just have a question. So the area that is going to incorporate that's now covered as part of the retail space, let's call it, is there any kind of rendering or anything? Not going to miss it, but do we know what that's going to look like? Is it going to be the same type of windows, whether they are now or?
Yes, it will be the same type of windows with a stucco that will match the facade. So it will, from what I saw from the architect, it will just enhance what's there. It's not really a deviation from the architecture that's there. Really, again, to, they're creating an enclosed vestibule, but it will be consistent with what you see from Green Lane.
Is that, is that something that we should just, I mean, again, we don't want to hold it up, it's an improvement, but is that something that we should just see or I'm just asking that?
So from a land-
You know, without delaying it?
Not being in a Harve district and from a land development perspective, there's really no ordinance provisions that dictate the aesthetics of a building of this type. So that's why it's not really something that they may have tonight or-
Yeah, no, I'm just asking because, you know, the building is not very well, I just, you know, hope that they would be here.
Absolutely, I would think that through the building permit process, those plans would be submitted and they would require a building permit. At that time, we would defer to that juncture.
That's what we could ask them to send in, some kind of a rendering or something.
Yeah, they would absolutely, as far as the building permit process, file that, but that usually stays in the building permit department, whereas the land development, of course, comes-
Yeah, I'm not asking for it to approve it, just to make sure that it's there, that we see that it will-
Sure, definitely.
Absolutely.
That'll happen.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. President, Kurt, have you been able to calculate the value of these waivers?
So we calculated the fee in lieu of the sidewalk basing it on approximately where the property line terminates into the Canal property, out to and wrapping into the Hunter Lane where their property ends. And it was based on what we typically see four inch sidewalk to cost, four foot width, five foot width, and it was thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars approximately.
So that would be the fee in lieu for the sidewalks. We're not requesting a fee in lieu for the other waivers, just for the sidewalk. Okay, and that's your recommendation?
Yeah.
It's my recommendation also.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right.
Reference to some of the events that have been a little bit publicized over the last week. Last Monday, we had a stabbing over in Commerce Park and also an aggravated assault. We're working both of them, we have suspects partially identified, so we're still working them pretty hard. So you're aware, we have two of our part-time officers that may have a controlled conditional offer of employment from full-time police departments, as the challenge that we always face. The recommendation of, with Mr. Dillon and speaking with the mayor and Sergeant Fate and Kurt, we have installed an additional crossing guard at Pond and Walma. And that's the challenge of that intersection, it's mostly people making a right, going the greens, so it's a controlled intersection, but still added safety to the children. The budget was submitted to Mr. Dillon yesterday, I know the consent of the mayor, and we put forward a request through the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for another police vehicle for next year.
For the chief.
Mayor.
I want to thank the chief for all the work that he did in putting together the budget and his review of this year's budget, and also in putting together the budget for next year. For the month, we're still averaging about eight hundred calls for service every month, which is pretty on par, same thing as last year. Anything else under the police department, fire department? As I've stated a couple times, I know, in the last month, about the restructuring committee and the work that they're doing, I can give you a copy. Thank you. This is the first step in what I've been talking about relative to the, to them putting together the fire association. This document has been submitted. This document is submitted to the state requirement, this document states that the fire companies will be forming an association, better known as the Bristol Borough Fire Association, which would bring them all together under one umbrella. The next step will be hopefully submitting by November, if not by November, by the end of the year, under the borough codified ordinances, Chapter Seven, the Fire Prevention and Fire Protection Ordinance. I'll be working with the fire chiefs in making changes to this, and then council will have to review it and decide what, this goes back to the Joe Grundy, former fire department, paid firemen and so forth, which we don't have anymore. So we've been doing a lot of work this month. Let's see. I attended the fire board meeting the other night. They're trying to interest some people becoming fire police. There's going to be a training by the county on October 6th, the 20th, and the 24th, trying to get some of the fire companies, if you have any other people that would like to be fire police, going to get them trained. The fire departments themselves are doing some training in October, I'm sorry, yeah, in October. They're going to have a live burn, I believe, at the county fire station, training center now in Quaid. And I think that's about it for me. Yeah, go ahead.
The fire police training, is that, I just wanted, is that when we have events and stuff, is that, so that might be something for everybody who's watching, that all that's going on right now with shortness of staff and here now, you know, now's the time maybe if anybody's interested, they get involved with that, maybe we could meet that because-
You have to join one of the fire companies at this point for that, you know, to happen. If you're going to join specifically to be a fire police, you know, because you are covered under the state fire police, so you have to have certain training. Versus, let's say, when we formed the traffic control group, which was separate, which is something I've been playing around with, that if we can't find enough volunteers for the, under the fire police, maybe we can look at how can we do something relative to traffic control.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, yeah.
But it's tricky because if you want to do it under the police department, it might be a real challenge or not.
Manual direction of traffic, a lot of things, you know, sometimes you like to use the crossing guards because they're not supposed to actually deal with traffic flow, so it's a catch 22.
As the chief said, one of the other things that we were looking at is maybe the crossing guards would be interested in becoming traffic control because there's some extended trainings they'd have to go through.
Yeah, I only mention that because we, with all our events, I mean, that's a consideration.
We're down to three fire police.
If we don't have that, then that's one of the reasons.
Do they get paid for that?
No. Now, that's a whole nother thing that will probably be coming up under volunteer fire, you know, something that might be an enticement. They're doing it around the state and around the county. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I know you're doing a lot of work trying to get all this done, we appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, well, I'm very happy that council has given me the support, you know, to make this happen because it's a challenge and I'm working with a good group of people, so.
Joe, I heard that they were thinking about giving volunteer fire people tax breaks on properties, did you ever hear anything about that?
Yeah, there's a, under a state, not our particular assessment, but there was a state law, trying to think, Act 60 or Act 11. That was a recommendation that the local municipalities give the, as an enticement to get people to join the fire company, tax, you know, break on their local taxes.
That'd be a good, that'd be a good enticement.
Yeah, they need something to shore it.
Yeah, there are some things out there in the state and federal government, some funding, which, I'm glad you said that, the, just reminded me about, you know, Chief Slack was able to get a grant for $253,000 for Station 50 and Station 51. The other companies had purchased breathing apparatus maybe two or three years ago, said they didn't need to do that, but it's a fifty, it's a $253,000 grant, you know, like a $25,000 match, and I think that's on the agenda tonight, number seven. So if you want to support that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, just a couple things, you know, with the fall leaf clean upcoming, which is the beginning of November 4th through December 9th on Thursday, just please just remember that you don't put anything in the plastic bags, you know, that's just a, you know, you do all this work and then the bags are there and they can't be taken. So it's just easy to forget that, but just make sure that there's no plastic involved with that.
Everybody, Michael?
Yes, yes, so 2021 Fall Leaf Pickup Program, leaves, the leaves will be picked up every Thursday for six weeks, beginning November 4th and ending December 9th. The 25th is a holiday, so pickup will be on Saturday, the 27th. Will that interfere with the parade, I'm just thinking how that works?
Yeah.
But, yeah, perhaps, so, but I'm sure they'll work that out. But again, it's just, as you see, no plastic bags will be, you know, accepted. And just make sure of that because you'll do all that work, put it in the plastic bag, and then it's problematic and it can't be taken. The other thing is, again, to just reemphasize that October 16th, Historic Bristol Day, come out and celebrate our history, have some fun. Again, there's a lot going on at Grundy, the house tours, the garden tour, the food, and then just to meet people, you know, it's usually a big event. With that in mind, I'm just going to ask that everyone really be aware of trash and weeds in your area, you know, pitch in a little bit, you know, the borough, I always say that the public works always does an incredible job and goes up and beyond. But if you see something, you could give myself a call or any of the council members, let's try to keep it clean and tidy up, especially with weeds, now we're getting another hit of more leather. And it's obvious that it's, it's spreading because it's going out now to McDonald's and to the Amish market. They're seeing that, you know, it's time to get on board and start renovating, so, and updating things. So I think it's really important to take pride in your property and your business and just pitch in a little bit and clean up. That's everything.
Thanks. Lorraine?
I just wanted to talk about the do-up. What a wonderful time we had and I want to thank Anna Laracy and her crew, and Craig Whitaker was awesome. There were a lot of people there. How many people did we calculate were there?
Eight, there are about 10,000 people.
10,000 people. And I don't think we had any incidents, did we, chief? One incident, so that's pretty good. We had a lot of the police presence there, thank you very much. And those of you who don't go, please come next year because it's incredible.
All right, why don't you read this? I was going to pass it out since you're on the do-up. That was in Sunday's papers, a letter to the editor.
Okay. Last paragraph? My wife and myself attended the annual Bristol Music Festival on Saturday night, September 18th, and we were not disappointed. We live approximately 50 miles from Bristol, but the experience was worth every mile and then some. The various music groups that performed that evening were simply outstanding and did not miss a beat, considering some of them had not performed for well over a year because of the coronavirus. The people who organized this event deserve a great deal of credit for presenting the public with a free concert that brought back many memories of how things were before the coronavirus. And many thousands of people took advantage of this wonderful opportunity in perfect weather. Don and Barbara Landry-Franconia. That's all I have.
And people traveled 50 miles to come here. It was a great event. I want to thank everybody, Lorraine said that worked hard to pull this off. Dave?
Yes, thank you. The BAaA had their annual golf tournament in September. It was a lot of fun and a good fundraiser. It's a really good organization. So far, they have given out over $160,000 in grants and scholarships to the Bristol High School kids and teachers. They also organize a Trenton Thunder game, which is a lot of fun, and they always, they always have a meeting place that's interesting. a meeting place that's interesting. Dad's Hats over here, the Canal Works, the former art gallery, the Bristol Museum, and they always have interesting speakers. It only costs $10 a year, and if they have their meeting at a bar, they buy you a drink, so basically it costs you nothing to make sure that you support this very good organization. So, want to plug in for them. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the good people of the North Ward who let me be there, serve them as their councilman for the last eight years. I'm not running again, and I did want to thank them for that privilege and honor that they bestowed on me. So, thank you. That's all I got.
Dave?
Yep, you're welcome.
Frank?
Just a few things. So, I've been doing a lot of walking around the path as of late, and a few of these things are interconnected, and some of them we've already talked about, but I do want to stress. So, almost all of this is related to those walks on the path. But if you go back behind Lennox, and I don't know, I honestly don't know if this is a question for the chief, or the question for the manager, or a question just for the property owner, but over the last couple of weeks, it's been readily apparent. It's only about three or four cars, but they're the same cars, they have their windows blacked out, there's clothes hanging from the windows. It very much appears to me that some people are camping out there in their car. Now, it's not borough property, I know, so I don't know if that's something we would want to address with Lennox, or if that's something that we can deal with from a law enforcement perspective. I don't know what...
From a law enforcement perspective, now it's private.
Okay. Then I'm going to see if maybe, Mr. Dillon, can we reach out to the property owners and let them know that there is some concern, because...
Give me some more details and I'll reach out.
Okay. Because on top of that, the three trash cans that are right there are loaded with trash that is on borough property, and the other ones are not.
That's the problem.
That appears to me that, you know, that it's...
On Friday, they were empty. On Saturday afternoon, they were full.
Right, no, I know. Oh, I know.
They were just coming in and just dumping.
Right, and I'm saying, right there, particularly, they're worse, and I think it's because of whatever activity is going on right there as well. So, yeah, I will send you an email, and then maybe we can reach out to the property owners, because it's not good. So, on top of that, then, relating to the path itself, I've said this two or three times already, I know Lorraine said the same thing, and I know Ralph recently said the same thing. And I know Mr. Dillon had sent a message to us as representatives of the East Ward about some proposed possible minor fixes to underneath that bridge. I will also send another email reminding about this, Mr. Dillon, but the underpass bridge on Green Lane is, I mean, it is in disrepair. It is, it looks horrible, it is not safe, in my humble opinion, and it's not just the mud, it's the rust. And again, you know, going back to this conversation that we're having about Route 13 and that we're having about sidewalks needed for McDonald's, no one can travel on those sidewalks anymore, so you're going under a dark bridge in the street because it is not, it cannot be traveled across. It's just really bad. And I would like to see us maybe get some other people involved if it's a PennDOT issue that needs to be really brought to their attention, because it's been a problem for us as long as I've been alive, but it just seems to have gotten a lot worse as of late. I know we're automatically just blocking it almost now at this point in time. When it rains, it just seems to me that we really need to dig in and look there, maybe get our engineers involved and get PennDOT involved. But I will send that email to Mr. Dillon, see if we can arrange for a meeting with whoever we need to meet with about that underpass.
It's a terrible gateway.
And it is. It's an ugly entrance toward town.
I brought it up last month. You could even walk the sidewalk.
Yeah, and you still can.
Maybe we should contact our congressman, Fitzpatrick or somebody, or Tomlinson, and see if they can... I'll write them emails.
Yep. And then, this one goes back to a conversation that Merrill and I had had a number of times a number of years ago, but as of late, the trains are idling where they used to idle, and they are putting off horrible smell in the, you know, right in the thick of people's lives. And I know that they kind of backed off of that for a while when we came at them, but they're right back to doing what they were doing before. Have you noticed that, Merrill, or have you been contacted about that?
It seems like, just lately, it's been, I've been catching a mini yard there for a long time, I haven't seen any mini yard. And I got a complaint, I guess it was about a month ago, and I called, I sent an email up to the yard master in Marrville, and then after that, I didn't see them coming in anymore. So, I thought, okay, maybe they're going to get the message and, you know.
Yeah.
But if they're back now...
This was four days ago for like three straight days. Now, you know, the last couple of days I haven't walked in that direction, but, you know, about 4:30 with, I mean, smoke that was pungent, and it's just right there. I mean, they are right next to the path, and they're loud, and they're zero concern for that neighborhood.
Well, they're, we're dealing with two engines all the time, because they have one on the front and one on the back. When they do their shifting, they always have to have it that way. So, they get the train ready to go, to leave, and then they sit there until New York gives them the clearance to go out on the high line.
Right.
So, that could be anywhere from an hour to 15 minutes or whatever. So, if it's going to continue, like, we, Mr. Dillon and I talked before about maybe having Amtrak come in, and we're making, I'm making a list up of everything that we would talk to them about, besides that.
Yeah. If you recall, we had a meeting with Congressman Fitzpatrick, and, you know, things got pretty good since then, which leads me to believe that there is a solution that doesn't involve them sitting right there in a neighborhood. It wasn't happening. I mean, I know what you're saying, but they stopped doing it, so they figured it out for some period of time.
Yeah. I go down there generally at least twice a week, and a lot of times on Saturday morning, I check out what's going on in the Hunter Road track, and then come around and go into the bridge and down Seabird and out all the way down Cassin. I haven't saw any trains sitting there idling, but...
I messaged Lorraine when I saw it. I should have included you, and I will next time.
Okay.
Just saying, this is, you know, this is no good, so. That is all I have. Thank you.
Tony?
I don't really have any there. I just want to thank Dave for his service. Dave, I thought you were an excellent councilperson. Pleasure serving with you, my friend. That's it.
I got a few things. First of all, I spoke to Rich Hart from Anchor Yacht Club, and he has informed me that Princeton University has made arrangements to operate their collegiate sailing team out of the Anchor Yacht Club, which is a pretty big honor.
That is great.
They're going to be practices on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, at 4:30 until dark. So, you're going to be seeing up and down, and there's a regatta on Saturday, October 9th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Also, the Women's Hawaiian Canoe Club will be practicing out of the yacht club as well. So, it's pretty nice that, you know, people in town now can see Princeton University's row team out there, and they're using...
I'm sure, just that, you know, when I lived there, every Tuesday night, there's a regatta as well, so that's great to see.
Having meats there and everything, so, which is, it's nice.
Cool.
All right. The other thing is, I talked to our district attorney today, Matt Weintraub, who has informed me that they're doing mural programs throughout the county, and they like to do one in Bristol Borough, and it's done through the Police Department, through community involvement, and through kids. So, he sent me four different renderings that they did. They just finished one in Marrsville, and I told him that I would mention it to council tonight. But I also told him that we have a mural committee. I think, Mr. Pezzar, run that. Greg, don't you dare?
I think it's involved.
Okay, so, I think what we do is, just want to show people at home, Mark, there's four renderings if you guys want to look.
Cue the sec.
There's one here, the second one, the third one, and the fourth one. So, I have some pictures here. You guys want to pass these out? And he said if we're interested, they would love to do something in conjunction with the Police Department and the residents, so I guess I'll, not that Bill needs another job, but I guess...
You should probably reach out to him.
Mr. Pezzar, reach out to this organization and see what they can come up with, if they can find a location to do something.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I spoke to Angelo Grisley again from the Lions Club, and let me go back to the last meeting about taking over Italian Day. And I want to mention that we're not looking to take over Italian Day. I don't need to take on another project. I will if I have to. I know Mr. Pezzar is interested in also running Italian Day. What we want to do is we want to bring Italian Day back the way it was. We want the Lions to run Italian Day, but we want to get involved, and we want to help the Lions, bring back all the vendors and everybody else that was there from years ago. We have already made contacts with the one in Jersey that, is it Hamilton or?
Hamilton.
Italian Festival. We also made contacts with people in New York in this short period of time that want to get involved. And there's also money that's available for this event that we need to let them know by Thursday if we could apply for some grants for this festival. So, Angelo told me to have a meeting on Wednesday, and he's going to talk to the Lions Club, and hopefully they meet again, I think, the following Wednesday or?
The third.
The third.
The first and the third.
Hopefully, at that meeting, myself and Greg, and anybody else that want to attend from council is more than welcome to come, but we definitely, look, if they want to run a food festival for three days, that's fine. We want to bring Italian Day back, and we want to bring it back the way it was 20, 25 years ago. So, hopefully, Greg, you know, we'll hear something after their Wednesday meeting. And again, we know it's a fundraiser for the Lions Club, we don't want to take any money from anybody, we're not looking to make any money, and I'm not looking to run anything. But we definitely want to bring it back with a whole new look. So, I guess we'll have to wait and see what's going on with that.
So, if you let Mr. Grisley know that if on Wednesday, you know, we can work together, I can certainly help him with that application for the grant.
Well, maybe tomorrow we need to reach out to the president and let him know what's going on. Rich Snyder. Maybe we need to reach out to Rich tomorrow and say we have a timeframe that, you know, we need to, we can apply for some funding for Italian Day. I did the Princeton thing. All right, so we're going to go into our regular meeting. Do we need to add anything to the agenda, or are we good? Okay, anybody in the public, again, on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room? End of public participation. Mayor, you have anything else?
No.
No mayor comment on number three? They need a motion for number three.
I just need to find my agenda. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept council meeting minutes for September 13th, 2021, accept the police and chief report for September 2021, accept Harb report for September 2021. Thank you.
Second, second by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number four.
Can you go to five for a second?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of the land development for the Bristol Amish Market, 498 Green Lane, Bristol, PA 19007, expiration date 11/3/2021.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Wait for five, or we got five?
I have four now. I have four now. Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of land development plan application for Bristol Amish, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did that one, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, you did? We might have to do that again.
For the Amish one?
Yeah, because there's a waiver.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted me to...
All right, I'm going to do, I'm sorry. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of land development plan application for McDonald's USA LLC for tax parcel number 4-004-001-003, as set forth in the attached resolution with partial waiver, sidewalk on Route 13, waiver for landscaping as well.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
I, I agree the entire motion for the Amish market, one that was...
So, can that just be added to that motion?
I just didn't...
It's fine.
Okay.
The developer, for each of them.
All right.
So, where are we, on six?
Six. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for Mecca construction for the waterfront park parking lot improvement in the amount of $993,295 contingent upon the final days of the 30-day RCO review period, which ends on October 11th.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize setting aside $25,000 from the fire fund for a match requirement of federal grant of $10,500 for the purchase of the self-contained breathing apparatus for Bristol Consolidated Fire Company and Bristol Fire Company.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Pezzar. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for Bucks County 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Cobham. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second by Mr. Gerard.
Thank you.